All right, first of all, I thank you for being so patient with us. At this time, I would like to call the February 20th, 2020 meeting to order at 6:36. Can we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic on which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
At this time, the Chair is seeking a motion to adopt the agenda.
Madam President, I make a motion that we adopt the agenda as printed.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. At this time, we're moving on to audience comments. All right, at this time, I'll call Mrs. Wambow.
Good evening.
Good evening.
This evening, for applause, applause, we recognize Burke Academy. The Missouri Options Program is an effective means to retain students, decrease dropout rates, and increase the number of students who are prepared for post-secondary education opportunities or to enter the workforce. The Missouri Option Program is designed to serve students who lack the credits necessary to graduate with their class or are at risk of leaving school without a high school diploma. Not only do students attend school for three hours a day, but they are also required to work at least 15 hours a week, although several students work many more hours than this. To complete the HICSET, a student must pass five separate tests in math, science, social studies, reading, and writing. The HICSET allows the students to have a state-issued high school equivalency credential, a Ruskin diploma. To date, we have 24 graduates. It takes a lot of hard work to finish the MOOPS program, and two students we are recognizing tonight definitely put in the work to make it happen, and I'm going to ask them to come forward now. Marquise Bland came to the MOOPS program at the beginning of the year and was one of the first students to complete the HICSET exam. He was dedicated to creating a future for himself and was able to finish before October. I'm not sure if Marquise has been able to join us yet. The second student we are recognizing is Markira Woodard, who came to the MOOPS program in November and was able to finish her HICSET by the end of January. Not only did she finish the HICSET, but she scored nearly perfect on several of the exams, and she received the top overall score for this MOOPS graduating class. And a little bit about the MOOPS staff, and if I say your name, please stand up because I know they are here this evening. It takes a team to assist students through the MOOPS requirements and to prepare for the HICSET exam. The team consists of Ms. Teresa Mullins, who leads the pre-MOOPS program with the assistance of Ms. Andrea Davidson Ferguson. Pre-MOOPS was created to assist students to complete all MOOPS program requirements, including an entrance exam into the MOOPS program. Once students complete the requirements, they officially transition into the MOOPS program, where Ms. Ann Terry and Dr. Kevin Butler assist the students with test preparation, test-taking skills, as well as job hunting and other life skills. Thank you to those teachers for helping so many students to open up endless opportunities that may have not been possible without the MOOPS program, and I also want to recognize their leader, Ms. Cynthia Corn, who helped put together all this great information. And I would like to invite Ms. Corn and Markira's parents or other family members who would Board Appreciation Week, and we want to thank each and every one of our school board members like to join us for a photo.
All right.
for all that you do. I know that you, we know that you put in countless hours and work on behalf of our students and families, and we are so appreciative to all of you. In front of your seats, you will find baskets that were put together by students. Administration Center, every building participated, and there's some special notes in there for each one of you, so thank you for all that you do. And then, lastly, I want to call up Leslie Washington with Student Services, who has a special presentation for the grant legacy.
Good evening.
Welcome, welcome.
I am here to present, we have been a recipient of the Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation. This is our third year in a row that we have been a recipient of their grant, their legacy grant for student health, and I have Ms. Beth Radke here, the Executive Director from the Baptist Trinity Lutheran Foundation, that is here to submit a check to the district on behalf of our students. I'm really excited about this because the last couple of years, we had the opportunity to go after $12,000 to assist with asthma support, social-emotional support for staff and students, and screening equipment. And this year, we've had the opportunity to receive $18,000, over $18,000 to go towards our student health, so I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Beth Radke.
Thank you. And I want to, first, I want to thank Leslie for all of her hard work. She's worked very closely with Tammy Collingsworth in our office to get that grant in the door and make sure that our committee had everything they need to make the decision, so she gets all the credit for doing all the heavy lifting, and all I do is show up with the fake check. So just really quickly, Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation is the result of the sale of Baptist Medical Center and Trinity Lutheran Hospital to Health Midwest. The foundations from those two nonprofit hospitals merged to form Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy Foundation back in the early 2000s. This program, we just started in 2017, so Hickman Mills has received a grant in each of the three years. We're focusing on schools and districts that have a high percentage of free reduced lunch students. We want to be able to affect health in a positive way, and so, as Leslie said, asthma treatment equipment, screening equipment, you guys got a vision spot screener this year, those things are like $7,000, and then support for kind of training around bullying and suicide awareness, that sort of thing. So we know that most school districts don't have the opportunity to get a lot of private foundation dollars, so it's a great privilege to be able to provide this check to you, and we're just so excited with the great work that you're doing in Hickman Mills District. One other quick thing I want to say is, the biggest program that we have at BTLF is called Kansas City's Medicine Cabinet, and that's a program that helps people get access to medical care. If you have families that are at or below 200% of federal poverty level for their whole household, they can access medical services for free. We help with glasses, including a complete eye exam, durable medical equipment, including hearing aids, prescriptions, including things like insulin, which are 700 bucks sometimes, and then dental treatment, especially right now, it's fillings and extractions. So mostly, we support adults through that program, but we also help kids, just in case they don't have what they need through Medicare or whatever, sorry, Medicaid, whatever. So Leslie knows a little bit about that program, but we are eager to help your families with those types of things, too. But again, sorry to take so much time, I get excited about work. But again, my thanks to Leslie for all of her hard work on this, and thank you to all for the great work that you do. I remember last time when I was here, it was School Board, National School Board Week or whatever, and we certainly do appreciate all the work you do, because we don't get paid to do this, so it's really, it's sincere appreciation on my behalf for your commitment to this district, these kids, and our community. It really means a lot. Not for the board.
That was amazing news, and thank you so much on behalf of the Board of Education.
Okay, moving on to the approval of the January 16th, 2020 Regular Session Minutes. Board of Education, have you had an opportunity to review the minutes?
Yes.
Okay, if there's no revisions to the minutes, at this time, seeking a motion.
Madam President, I make a motion that we approve the 6.0 minutes from January 16th, 2020.
Discussion? Director Abram?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Vice President Reagan?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
President Briggs?
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero. Director Cargill, executive updates.
All right, we'll start with Dr. Skinner. Thank you. With the enrollment and attendance report, and then he'll just flow right into the Student Services Report as well.
Well, good evening, while they're looking, ah, there we go. I wanted to start the evening with the enrollment/attendance report that we give every month. You will see that enrollment is down compared to January a year ago, approximately 240 students, and our 90/90 attendance rate is a little down overall as a district, almost 2%, but you do see some highlights. If you look at kindergarten, kindergarten, we have an increase in enrollment and over 4.5% increase in 90/90 when you look at attendance this year versus last year. And if you look down on the first page, you look at 11th and 12th grade, they're also up where they were last year. In fact, 11th grade is over at 4.5%, so that's very exciting. And then you start looking at schools, Dobbs Elementary is up 4.72% where they were last year as a school overall, and they also have some good gains, like for instance, if you look at first grade, you'll see they're over 15%, and 5th grade is over 13% where they were a year ago at this point. Truman, every, I mean, I'm sure you're tired of hearing about it, but I'm not tired of saying, I mean, Truman, every month so far, has been over where they were from a year ago, over 4% as a whole, and if you start looking, every grade except for one is up, and that, this is the first time in the entire school year that even one grade has been lower from last year, so this is still exciting. It really is. And then Ruskin, again, you know, Ruskin has been struggling, and this year, they're doing much better. They're up over 5% where they were over a year ago. And you look, you'll see their 10th, 11th, and 12th grade, and this is the first time 9th grade has actually fallen down where they were. So we are very excited with the report, and tonight, I'm going to share a little bit with the Student Services Report. Part of that is attendance, and then afterwards, I'm going to ask Dr. Kaya Turner, who's in the audience, to come up, and she's going to share some of our attendance efforts with Attendance Works and I'll hear and talk a little bit about what we've been doing with our attendance teams at the schools. But first, I'm going to go ahead and do the Student Services Report. I'm sorry, I have several things, we're kind of juggling tonight. There we go. So this report, and you all have it in front of you, you have a hard copy as well, this basically is kind of highlighting all of what Student Services has done so far this year, and you just had Ms. Washington up here a minute ago with the Legacy Grant, Teresa Tanner, also the Director of Student Services in the audience as well. We have done a lot this school year, and basically, this is kind of outlining everything. Our Swope Health Services, we started our partnership last year with them, and we are continuing. Every Thursday from now until the end of the school year, Swope will be in one of our buildings, working with our students. We had our Score One Vision Van in October through the Kansas City University of Medicine and Biosciences, and we had over 100 students go get eye exams, and if needed, they also received glasses at no charge. We also have started Cornerstones for Care this year. We are working with them in two capacities. One is functional family therapy, is for students in ages 11 to 18 and their families, and they're also offering therapeutic services for students and behavioral therapy. And again, I'm just kind of hitting some of the highlights. You'll have time, because it is, it's a little long, but it does contain a lot of very great information. Our Trauma Smart Program, we started that last year in pre-K through 6th grade, and we have continued it this year with our elementary, and as we continue it this year, we have been meeting to determine how that's going to look next year when we expand to secondary and district office personnel. We've had our Coats for Kids Program. They had delivered over 425 coats that we distributed to our students, to our FSLs in the schools. On the Baptist Trinity Lutheran Legacy, you just saw that check. Again, we've had it three years in a row, and every year, it's been a little over 12,000, and this year, it was closer to 19,000, so we're excited about that. We just started last month with Rediscover Mental Health. We now have a full-time licensed behavioral health professional that works onsite, and they go between Burke and Smith-Hale, and again, no cost to the district at all, so we're very excited about that. A lot of you were there when we opened our Loads of Love Program, we go ahead and started that, when we have washers and dryers for our families. We have 24 slots per week that parents can sign up through the FSLs at the schools, and they're guaranteed two washers and two dryers each time they come with a two-hour time slot. And we have had a couple of families already start utilizing that service. Attendance Works and I'll hear, again, addressing our chronic atheism, we continue to work, even though we are struggling, we have a lot going on, and again, I'm not going to go a lot into that, because Dr. Turner is going to come up shortly and talk a little bit more about that. In December, we had three families from Ruskin and Smith-Hale that received holiday boxes and food boxes, thanks to Dr. Cargill and her family. We also had our Went to Wonderland in December as well, where we had McKinney-Vantoux families come, and we gave them meal prizes, toys, they had a holiday basket. We also had 150 toys donated from Firsthand Foundation that were given. We continue to work with our IMPACT Program for McKinney-Vantoux families. We launched it last year in April as our pilot, and it was very successful. We launched it full-time in October, and we have, once a month right now, we had it twice a month, and basically, we're going to be doing it once a month, because we've had a little bit of a challenge in getting the families there, but we do give them multiple communications, and we continue to strive to get our families there for services. Our truancy referrals, we try not to be punitive, but at some point, when attendance gets to a certain point, we don't have a choice, we do have to do a truancy referral to get our families before judge, saying, you know, this is crucial, they have to be here, and we have had 37 truancy students taken to court as of January. We also have given the Basics Program, which basically provides hygiene products, basic necessities for all our families. We get this every month, it's gone, and our nurses order it, and the nurses, as well as the FSLs, distribute that to families. And I will, on this one, you know, I asked some of the nurses, you know, how is it really affecting our families, and so I got a couple testimonials, if you see at the bottom. One dad told one of the nurses that this was the best thing that's ever come across in all his struggles. And another mother said, giving the Basics gave her family everything to change her son's life and take a heavy burden off her. So it is definitely being appreciated and used by our families. And again, you know that with the Student Services Department, with our special education, we do self-reporting to the state, and we did submit some files last year for review, and basically, we had a very good bill of health, we had a parent survey that we conducted as well, and the results from the parents were very positive, so again, we're very happy. Then, I kind of got into numbers, because a lot of times, you say, well, how many families are we serving with McKinney-Vantoux, how many students are in contract? So then we get to the back, you'll see, like, for instance, our contract school facilities, we currently have 36 students in contracted schools, and these are our schools like Gillis, Rainbow, and so forth. Then we talk about how many students we have in our 504s, which currently, we have 54 students on a 504 plan in the district right now throughout our schools. And then we start talking a little bit about the special education, we list it by race and gender, but basically, we have had a slight reduction in special ed with, again, with our enrollment, it's a little bit, about 9%. We went from 827 students during the 18, 19 school year to 749 so far this year. And then we started looking at McKinney-Vantoux families, and you'll see right now, as of this year, we had 184, which is down from 311 last year, which is down from 496 the year before, so we're really getting a hand to our families, and it's making a difference. And you'll see, just so you can kind of see it in a different light, it's broken down by school as well as by grade. And you'll see, like, for instance, when you look at the grade, the 6th grade has the highest with 21 students in McKinney-Vantoux program. And the last, but certainly not least, we look at our health visits, and there's an average monthly visit by all the schools for how many students see our nurses every day. So again, I know that went through very quick, there's a lot, if you take your time and go back and read it, I think you'll really appreciate, the Student Services Department, I feel, has done a great job this year. I have great people that I work with, and so, again, would not be possible without the whole department. I really do appreciate them so much. Any questions before I bring Dr. Turner up to talk a little bit more about attendance?
I just want to say thank you for the update that you provided and the work that you're sharing in terms of support for students and families. Thank you to you and your team, just appreciate it.
Thank you, Dr. Skinner.
I have some other comment, and then maybe a question also, Dr. Skinner, and I noticed, and you know, I follow this very closely, as well as other members of the board, and the reason why I was closing two schools, and I noticed that, as you mentioned when you started off, that we were down a little over 200 kids as it relates to January, and there seems to be a trend. And as I look at the, from the 13 categories from pre-K to 12, nine of those, as, the students in those nine categories, nine grades, are less this year than the year before.
Are you talking about on this report?
Yes, sir, on attendance, I'm sorry, yes, sir. And I'm wondering if, if there's some way that, well, I guess, knowing the demographics study that we had done and the follow-up, pretty much predicted what's happening here.
Correct.
I'm wondering if there's anything that we can do to cap that at a point, and I know you don't know, I don't know, if we knew, we wouldn't be, we would have a consulting firm, that we'd be millionaires. But I'm wondering, how much more can we engage our families who have school-aged children, pre-K on up? The importance it is of stabilizing those families. I realize that's saying a lot, because the employment, unemployment, housing, all those factors factor into why we're losing something like 200 students per year. We cannot exist, if you do some predicting, losing 200 students a year. I think when I came on the board a little over three years ago, we had about, what, 6,800 students? And now, it's just down to 50?
600.
5,600. So that ought to be, that ought to be alarming, that'll be an emergency kind of a thing for every resident of this school district. And I'd like to suggest again, that at one point, we call in the four council people who represent this district, and the two state representatives that represent this district, and sit down and share with them this kind of information, that they then can come in and bring to the table those companies that are in this district, like Cerner, and that's all I want to say about Cerner. You know how I feel about that. I'm not going to say anything else, please somebody keep me from saying anything else. But to the table, that they know that they have a role to play in the stabilization of the Hickman Mills School District. There's nothing more important to any society than education. It perpetuates culture. And I think that the sooner we do that, to get these folks at the table, if you have to feed them, fine, but get them here, and let them be the ones that call upon the companies, the businesses in this district, to, and let them host it, in addition to the board or the superintendent, all of them. This is alarming. This is alarming, and pretty soon, we're going to have to end up closing more schools, because we'll have classrooms that have fewer kids, and so why keep the school open? And I think that that's something that's, that'll affect all of us, it should affect all of us internally, because it's going to happen, it's going to happen, unless somewhere along the way, there's something to stabilize this community, that we can stabilize the attendance of our young people. So I know that, I'm not saying this for you to have any ideas about it, but if you had them, you'd already put them into practice, but I think that's the suggestion that I would have, is that we call those folks to the table, and get some parents there. We've got the Teachers Association, and the parents need to be at that table also, the Neighborhood Association needs to be there, not just making a presentation, but at the table to discuss ways that we can end up stopping the outmigration, if you will, of parents and of families in this district. Thank you, Madam President, I apologize for taking so long.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Director Watry?
Of the kids that are in the McKinney-Vantoux Program, how many of them are enrolled or participating in the IMPACT Program?
You know, we had invite, how many did we invite last month?
We invited all of our kids.
We invited, we invited every family. I couldn't remember if it was every family or just majority, but to be honest, we send them texts, we phone call, I mean, we do everything, and last month, we had zero show up.
Okay, because although, you know, I'm seeing that our numbers, as far as McKinney-Vantoux have decreased, but also, kind of using a term that's been used a lot tonight, piggybacking off of Director Brooks, with our numbers decreasing, it would also, that would also correlate with the numbers decreasing within our homeless population. But the one thing I want to make sure of is that those homeless populations are being treated, especially to maintain those, because that's what, 184 families, if we can maintain their housing, then we can maintain them staying in the district, and that would be a significant number.
We continue to try different modalities to reach them, again, texting, phone calls, you know, and again, multiple phone calls, because we'll call them to reach somebody. And when they do come, you know, they get great service, and you know, we're able to help them, but a lot of times, to be honest, their challenge is with transportation, their working, different things that kind of hinder that, and so we are working with our backbone, trying to make adjustments to the program to ensure more participation.
Okay, one of the other impossible suggestions is getting with PIO, am I using that acronym correctly? Okay, great, sorry. Just to see how, I know that we have a family summit that's approaching in March, and I want to make sure that the families that do come to, because some that come to our family summit aren't necessarily in very stable housing, so that if it's possible, and I would ask that that backbone organization be present at the family summit, so that we can help them promote the program that we're trying to provide for our families.
I'll definitely talk to them.
Thank you. Okay, great. Thank you, thank you, thank you. It should affect all of us internally, because it's going to happen, it's going to happen unless somewhere along the way, we do something to stabilize this community, that we can stabilize the attendance of our young people. So I know that, I'm not saying this for you to have any ideas about it, but if you had them, you'd already put them into practice. But I think that's the suggestion that I would have, is that we call those folks to the table, and get some parents there. We've got the Teachers Association, and the parents need to be at that table also. The Neighborhood Association needs to be there, not just making a presentation, but at the table to discuss ways that we can end up stopping the out migration, if you will, of parents and of families in this district. Thank you, Madam President, and I apologize for taking so long.
Madam President, I have a question.
Yes, Director Watcher.
Of the kids that are in the McKinney-Vento program, how many of them are enrolled or participating in the IMPACT program?
You know, we had invite, how many did we invite last month?
We invited all of our kids.
We invited, we invited every family. I couldn't remember if it was every family or just majority. But to be honest, we send them texts, we phone call, I mean, we do everything. And last month, we had zero show up.
Okay. Because although, you know, I'm seeing that our numbers, as far as McKinney-Vento have decreased, but also kind of using a term that's been used a lot tonight, piggybacking off of Director Brooks, with our numbers decreasing, it would also, that would also correlate with the numbers decreasing within our homeless population. But the one thing I want to make sure of is that those homeless populations are being treated, especially to maintain those, because that's what, one-hundred-and-eighty-four families say. If we can maintain their housing, then we can maintain them staying in the district, and that would be a significant number.
We continue to try different modalities to reach them. Again, texting, phone calls, you know, and again, multiple phone calls, because we'll call them to reach somebody. And when they do come, you know, they get great service, and you know, we're able to help them. But a lot of times, to be honest, their challenge is with transportation, their working, different things that kind of hinder that. And so we are working with our backbone, trying to make adjustments to the program to ensure more participation.
Okay. One of the other impossible suggestions is getting with PIO. Am I using the acronym correctly? Okay, great. Sorry. Just to see how, I know that we have a family summit that's approaching in March, and I want to make sure that the families that do come to, because some that come to our family summit aren't necessarily in very stable housing. So that if it's possible, and I would ask that that backbone organization be present at the family summit, so that we can help them promote the program that we're trying to provide for our families.
I'll definitely talk to them.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you're right.
Okay, great.
You're good.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
Okay. Dr. Turner, could you come up real quick, please?
Welcome.
Welcome, Dr. Kia Turner. Hi, friends.
How y'all doing? How you doing?
Okay, good. Do I just touch the mic?
I'm going to see if this one will do.
I'm not touching it.
And you have a copy of this at your seat as well?
Oh, that's cool, man.
Last one on the screen. He's going to put that presentation on.
Okay. All right. Okay. Do they want to do something else?
We can just scroll down with these.
Great. So, I've been told I have three minutes. I'm also chatty, so I'm going to try to keep it really brief. As you know, the Hickman Mills School District has been working with Attendance Works and All Here and United Way to impact student attendance, which is relevant, so we were just discussing it. And what's happened is that each of the eleven schools in the district have established a pilot group of students, as well as an attendance team. I think you know this already. And so, each school had to have at least ten kids in the pilot. We have two-hundred total enrolled in pilot groups across the district. And then, school teams have been trained in Attendance Work strategies, including, and these began with parent-teacher conference, so before parent-teacher conference, and they started implementing in October. So since then, caring conversations, so having conversations with families to kind of drill down to root causes for student absence. What we found was that our communication with families was very punitive, very, I'm just calling to let you know that Larry has missed ten days of school, and if he misses another day of school, we're going to have to send you a citation letter. If you have any questions, call back. You know, and it was turning families off. And so Attendance Work strategy is very much about making sure that we're having that warm connection, getting to know our families, hearing what they believe is special about their children, and sharing what we already know is special about them, and enveloping in that conversation, the desire to see those children coming to school, and then letting them know, "Hey, you've missed X amount of days. Can we help you? What's happening? What support do you need to get kids to school?" Right? So we've been doing that monthly, in person, and via person-to-person, voice-to-voice phone calls, so you can't do that over a voicemail. But getting someone on the phone has happened every month for all of the students, all the families in the pilot, right? What we found through these conversations with parents is that the barriers are varied, but sort of typical. A lot of them didn't realize how many days kids had missed, and letting them know, "Hey, the reason we're calling," the script is something like, "Hey, I just want you to know that we are a part of the Pick the Elementary School or Secondary School Attendance Team, and Larry has missed a few days of school. And the reason you were flagged is because anytime a kid gets over ten percent of absence, we want you to know that that child tends to fall a little bit behind their grade-level peers. So we just wanted to let you know that he's maybe a little bit behind. We want to help. Can you tell us what's going on? Do you need anything? How's Larry doing? We see you've called him out sick. We see that sometimes, you know, he's missed, and we don't know the reason. What can we do to help you?" Right? So families, upon being notified, were very receptive to the idea that we were monitoring their kids, and shared a few barriers, including transportation, cars broken down, I live within the boundaries where they can't be bused, so I can't get the child to school, mental, behavioral health support needs. My child has fill-in-the-blank mental support need or behavioral support need. I do not know what to do. I cannot get the kid to school. I recognize that this is a problem. I need support myself. Housing, particularly with what we know is going on at Nob Hill, has been a significant issue, and I've talked to no fewer than, I want to say, five or six families who are like, "The child isn't coming to school, because we don't know where we're going to live. And so we need to get this settled, and then, yeah, we'll get him on the bus, but where are we going to live?" So there's that. And then, a lot of parents, and not even a lot, I'd say the overwhelming majority really want children to do well. I think sometimes, there's this perception that parents aren't sending kids to school because they don't care, and that's false. That is absolutely not true. Parents care very deeply about their children and want the very best for those children, and a lot of times, they have their own support needs that they have, you know what I mean, in addition to whatever's happening with children. And it just tends to get in the way, particularly as children get older. So support. So, all right, Kia, you said that, know what you're doing about it. So Attendance Works, as I said, has been equipping school teams with strategies. They've done two in-person trainings. They've also completed two virtual trainings. I've helped to facilitate all of those, right? And I meet with school teams monthly as well at their school sites to make sure that the work is happening, and to help further it, and to track it, and to log it, and to be able to share it with you all. United Way has provided every school, I think you have been told this as well, a thousand dollars to do a pilot, to determine what could we add to our school toolbox that might better engage our families. And what those conversations have primarily centered around is, how can we recognize parents who are doing better with getting kids to school? How can we say, "Hey, we see you're doing a great job. What do parents need from us?" And that looks a lot like gas cards, cards to Walgreens to get medicine, maybe cards to all these for groceries, things like that, and just a call that says, "We appreciate you getting Larry to school. We know he'd missed a few days, but he's been on track. Thank you so much." How do we incentivize students? How do we make them want to come to school? What recognition can we provide for improved attendance, as opposed to just focusing on perfect attendance? And then, All Here is the platform that we're using to track all of this positive momentum. So All Here is a software that essentially logs positive culture climate, because we are shifting school culture ultimately. So every time an attendance team member has a positive interaction with the student, that goes above and beyond, i.e., giving them gift baskets for the holidays would be an above-and-beyond measure, right? That would get logged into All Here for the students in our pilot. What we want to see is which personal touches are having the biggest impact on getting kids to come to school, with the hopes that with the data gained, we are able to spread those efforts building-wide next school year. Does that make sense? So how are we doing? Oh, look, my numbers didn't transfer on there, so I'm going to wing it for you all. All right, so in our elementary pilot, the gray is the number of kids currently enrolled in elementary schools, right? So then, the orange is the number of children of that big number who have improved attendance, which means since we started talking to their family, the child has started coming to school more often, right? The blue bar are students who have improved their attendance to such a degree that they are now above the ninety-ninety, at or above the ninety-ninety. Am I saying that clearly? Like, they hit ninety percent attendance or better. Okay. So for all grade levels, that's what we're seeing, and I'm sad, because I have just recently updated everybody's chart again, and this would look a lot, even more impressive, right? It looks even better if I had updated it just last night instead of a couple nights ago. But as you can see, at every single level, students are improving their attendance, and then we're also seeing students who improve it to such a degree that they hit that ninety-ninety mark or better, and that's what we want. And this is strictly just based on having these caring conversations with families, providing ready interventions, connecting them with what they express as needs, and ultimately showing them that we're a partner, and not some punitive organization looking to catch them and, you know, do something bad. And so thirty-four percent of students in the pilot have improved their attendance, ninety to ninety percent or better, that's across the district. Thirty-five have improved in general. That means sixty-nine percent of these two-hundred students have had positive momentum since the beginning of this pilot. The reason I think the number is important is because while we're here thinking, what are we going to do to keep kids coming? What are we going to do to stem the tide of students not showing up in class? The truth is, it's what we all know, relationships are power. We have got to build school cultures that say, "We will actively engage our parents. We are going to put ourselves in front of them as partners. We are going to take a people-first approach to family engagement, and we are going to continue to do that even when we are met with resistance, because we know at the end of the day, we are here for the children, and so are they." Okay, that's it.
And I just want to actually kind of give Dr. Turner kudos. I mean, she is awesome. I'm going to tell you, even on snow day, she's up here working with us. I mean, she is up all the time, constantly. So I mean, she is, she is actually, to be honest, I'd say she's an heath that really has helped this program together, so she's been awesome.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you so much.
Oh, do y'all have, I'm supposed to ask, do you have questions?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
What kind of support do, I guess I said, what kind of support do you have with kids who say they don't like school, or they don't want to be at school, or their alarm clock goes off late, and they tell you, "Just, we come to school late all the time because we don't like school," or "Our alarm clock goes off, we don't care." I mean, how would you handle a student like that, that expressed their concern that they hate school, and they don't want to be at school? What strategies do you come up to make them feel like this is important, school is important?
So actually, I've talked to several. I've had phone conversations with parents, and then at the secondary level, face-to-face conversations with students, and then phone conversations, so I can compare, like, what is your mama thinking, and what did you say, that you're not coming to school for? And when we run into students who feel disengaged, I like to drill down to the root cause. I think of one young man in particular, sixth grade, when I went to interview him in his class, he was sleeping. And I said, "Hey, man, you've missed like twenty-five percent of school year at this point, and whatnot, you were twelve. What is happening?" And he said, "When I come to class, I don't really know what's going on, since I don't know you, and you don't know me." I don't know what's happening in class. I have trouble connecting to what we're doing. That's my grown-up way of saying what he said. And so what I do then is send that information to school administration, so perhaps we can talk to the parent about getting additional tutoring supports for the student, is he needing to go through like an evaluation process? It's significant that he's missed twenty percent of the school year, and the reason is, he doesn't feel like he's keeping up with everybody and doesn't know what to do. I run into the same thing at high school as well, a young lady comes to mine as well, and she said, "I don't really feel like I can read, and I also don't know like my math, and my mom taught me to count change, but like, outside of that, I'm not real sure what I'm supposed to do. So I'm just kind of looking for a job right now, because I feel like maybe at least I can go to work." And so, helping her with that by saying, "What have you done? And then what do you need?" Is the way we drill down, and in some cases, it's just a look at overall culture climate. Are we utilizing all of the classroom instructional resources that are available to us? We have a ton of EdTech tools, are we using those? We have a lot of curriculum options. What are we doing to kind of grab and maintain student attention? And those are the conversations that we have during our attendance meetings, like, here's what the kids are saying, or what parents are saying, what can we do?
Okay, so what about if they're expressing a concern about a certain teacher? That's just the reason why we're not coming to school, because the teacher doesn't care? How would you handle that situation if they're saying that it's a certain situation with the teacher? How would you approach a student and let them know that, okay, they feel more than welcome, you need to come to school still? Report this to somebody? I mean, I just think I want to know what the support is to make our students come to school and feel welcome.
I agree, and I think that's a huge concern. Run into that too, several times, elementary, middle, and high, actually. And ultimately, parents want to feel heard. A lot of the times, what we do at school is shielded from parents. They have no idea of what it looks like when their kids walk through the doors of our buildings. So all they have are the student reports that come back, "My teacher doesn't like me, doesn't listen to me, everybody hates me." And so, in those instances, I hear the parent out, empathize, and then follow up with the administration, who ultimately tends to investigate, like, what is happening? They talk to the student, they talk to the teacher, and then they turn around and follow up with the parent. So I get to be like an intermediary, does that make sense?
And I'll tell you, like, I had a student, I talked to a parent last night, and talked to, I talked to the husband last night and the wife today. And the bottom line is, I'm going to go meet with them and the administration next week, because they wanted me to be there. So again, we step in, and we really are working with the administration when those things happen, and with the parent.
And parents appreciate, because the next month, the follow-up happens, like, hey, how did that go? Did someone call you? Is that still happening? Did that get addressed? Let's get somebody on it. I apologize for that delay. Let's figure this out. It's customer service and relationship building, man. Other questions?
If I might, Madam President, I know you don't want to call me, but just, I won't take, I won't, don't. Oh, oh, thank you. I got, she's out. Anyway, no, I'm just kidding. Please keep in mind that thirty percent of school-aged kids in our district don't go to Hickman Mills School. Thirty percent of the kids in our district who are at school, have school elders, don't go to this. Somehow on the way, we need to find out who they are and where they're going to school. They're not going to private parochial school. I would be willing to wager you that they're going to charter school, and you know how you do that. So if that's the case, if, I bet they have good attendance at those charter schools, because they don't play around. And, but our kids live here, but don't go to school in the district. That's something we need to address somewhere along the way.
Yeah, but what charter schools went over us is the public relations war ultimately. They're able to be like, "Look at all the cool, amazing, shiny things that we're doing," which are exactly like what we're doing, but we just don't tell our story enough. And I know that's something that we're working on now, but I just think that's it. There's not a real big difference. Families just need to know that.
Y'all good? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have Ms. Wambow with item seven point three, communications audit.
Good evening. As you will recall, as part of our strategic plan under the pillar of our district, it calls for a communication audit to examine our current communication practices and determine what's working well, and where our challenges are and how we can address those. So we hired the National School Public Relations Association to come in and do a deep dive of all of our communications. So they looked at district-wide communication, school-level communication, hundreds of documents, and interviewed dozens of people here, including staff, business partners, community leaders, to get their thoughts. And so, you have that report in front of you on your desk, and I am going to ask our auditor, Steve Movenon, to come forward and present his findings.
Welcome. Good evening.
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here. President Briggs, board members, Dr. Cargile, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for the opportunity and for inviting the National School Public Relations Association, or INSPIRA is the acronym, to come in and do the communications audit that Marissa was talking about. Taking this step puts you in rather elite company in school districts around the country. Of the fourteen-thousand or so districts, public school districts around the nation, only a couple hundred have stuck their neck out and invited us to come in and do this kind of work. So you're really leading, it is, I think, an indication of your commitment to taking communication seriously. So we are glad to be here and present the findings of our report. As Marissa indicated, I think you've got the sixty-four-page report in front of you. I am not going to belabor the issue tonight. I'm going to try to blitz through this report, give you a thirty-thousand-foot overview of it, and trust that you're going to take the report seriously and do your homework, as you always do, to really read through it. Just a quick word about me. I was actually born not too far from here, in Salina, Kansas, a few hours west on Interstate Seventy. Rest of my family migrated back to this area. They're all in Olathe and Overland Park or whatnot. My visit this time is so short, I didn't even tell them I was coming. I flew in this afternoon, I'm out tomorrow, they don't even know I'm here. Prior to my retirement a few years ago, I spent my, the majority of my career as the communications director in the Washoe County School District, that's the Reno-Sparks-Lake-Tahoe area in northern Nevada. I was there for twenty-four years as the, as a director. In addition to my involvement here, I want you to know, it wasn't a one-man show. The executive staff of our national organization of INSPIRA were intimately involved in the report. They reviewed it, they edited, they suggested recommendations, they were involved in every step in the process along the way. Very quickly, what the heck is a communications audit? Think of it as a communications GPS system. Here's where you are now, here's where we think you can get in the future, as these various recommendations get implemented. The goal of any audit, and this one in particular, really was twofold. One was to seek data, opinion, and perceptions, and to assess from that the effectiveness and the management of your public relations, marketing, and community engagement processes throughout the district. And secondly, to provide some customized recommendations for you on some strategies and some best practices that, when implemented, will build and enhance your overall communications I want to tell you that we- I, um, want to tell you that we began this process with what I called a data dump. Marissa and her staff sent me and INSPIRA a ton of information, uh, to look at. Uh, print and digital publications, reports, uh, programs. We looked at media coverage, looked at websites, both at the district level and, and at schools. Um, we looked at material and judged them for their effectiveness of the message delivery, for readability, for visual appeal. We looked at demographic data, strategic plans. I watched board meetings online, to the point where my, um, my wife said, what the heck are you wa- what is that that you're watching? I said, well, it's the Hickman Mills School Board. I need to really get an idea of what's going on. Let me stop and say, I would be remiss if I didn't thank, um, Marissa and Amanda and the rest of the communications staff and your executive leadership team for the good work that they did and all the material that they sent. We absolutely could not have done it without them. Now, having said that, the core of this process were the focus groups that we conducted over a couple of days back in October. And you see the various groups on the screen that we solicited input from. Um, we asked them a series of similar questions. We were looking for patterns and trends. Uh, that's what made it into the, into the final report. We assured participants of their anonymity. We wanted them to be honest. We didn't want anybody to sugarcoat anything. I assure you, they did not. Uh, stakeholder groups that are represented totaled about 85 or 90 participants over those two days. We also interviewed the superintendent, we interviewed Marissa and her staff. Um, and over the next four slides, I want to give you some highlights of what we heard from those focus groups. First, your district was described by your community as warm, caring, student-centered, and family-oriented. And I think the, the report that just preceded me is a good indication that you take that, that work seriously. We heard lots of good comments about your work to promote racial equity. That was seen as a clear strength, and we heard it uniformly across the board in every group. We heard good things about the free all-day pre-K program. That really distinguishes you, as I'm sure you know, from a lot of your neighboring districts. And it's something that, as we get into the report a little bit later on, is something that we think you could market much more successfully as a, as a distinguishing characteristic of the school. As you read the report and you think about the recommendations, you'll notice we tried to tie the focus group comments back to the recommendations, so that you can see how what we heard in those groups, uh, informed the recommendations. I can tell you, and this is something that I'm sure you're aware of, there is a strong base of support throughout the community from a wide variety of community groups that you engage with. And not only are they there, they told us they're not only here to help, that, that they really do want to help, they just need to be asked. And some of them didn't think they're being asked to do enough, and they're willing and ready to do more. We also had really good stuff, uh, about your social media and what your communications staff and the rest of you are doing, particularly on Twitter. I started following the district on Twitter, so I feel intimately, uh, involved in what's going on. It's a, it's a great tool, and you're being very successful at it. One of the questions that we asked in every group was how they thought people in this community described the Hickman Mills C1 school district. And in every group, they thought the district was described in negative terms predominantly. Across the board, we heard that. Now, they also said, and I want you to pay attention to this, because it's crucial, they also said that may or may not reflect reality, that there are more good things going on in Hickman Mills C1 than the majority of people in the community recognize, and you can do a much better job. That said, you know it, perception is reality, and we've got to do a, a, a better job of overcoming that perception. The district website was seen as a useful tool, but it wasn't a go-to source of information, interestingly enough. There's a ton of information there, um, that I, and I'm going to talk a little bit more about the website in just, uh, a little bit. And there was also widespread concern about the overall decline of communities' economic health. We heard that from, from, um, a majority of groups. And next, I want to turn to, um, some observations that the auditing team make based on our perceptions. You heard what we heard in the focus groups. We're switching a little bit now to what our, what some of our, uh, observations are. Clearly, rebuilding the district's, um, rebuilding the district's image is job one. Fortunately, there is a wellspring of support out there in the community to help you do that. We also heard great comments about Dr. Cargile, who was described as highly qualified, skilled, a skilled education leader with high visibility. I know you're going through a search process right now, and if I can diverge for just a minute and give you a personal opinion, regardless of all the other qualities that you seek in a new superintendent, I want you to keep in mind that school districts are best served when they are led by articulate, dynamic, and skilled communicators who are well-connected with the community. From our perception, that has to be one of the key considerations as you go through the search process. Next, your public relations and, or public information and partnerships office is staffed with skilled and professional administrators, and they do quality work. What will take them to the next level, however, is more structure and a more strategic approach to their work. And finally, uh, we think you would be well-served with a major dive into a marketing and branding campaign, uh, for the district to help tell your many strengths. So with that in mind, let's go through the recommendations. The first recommendation is to more strategically align the communications work that is going on with your mission and strategic plan, and particularly to develop and implement a written communications plan. So here's a communications plan in a nutshell. What are our key messages? Who are the audiences that we want to deliver those messages to? How do those audiences prefer to get their information? How are we going to get it to them? And at the end of the day, how do we evaluate our efforts? How do we know that we're making a difference with the information that, that we've given them? Uh, the full report in front of you has detailed action steps on all of these. Um, let me put this recommendation in just a, a, a simpler format. I think what we're really saying is, let's just be more thoughtful in our communications work. Be proactive, so that when you come to work on any given day, you're not just caught up in the day-to-day activities of responding to a crisis at this school or a media inquiry that comes in. You've got a backbone and a plan that guides your work, uh, throughout the year. Number two, this recommendation is made, um, because it was evident to us in the focus groups that the right hand doesn't always seem to know what the left hand is doing or talking about. That key messages are not always cascading down throughout the organization and reaching everybody, uh, who need to know. And it also acknowledges that sometimes comments from some directors are not fully in sync or aligned with what the district's basic messages are. As elected officials, what you say here in meetings and what you say out in the community carries great weight. When they hear conflicting messages from different directors, it causes confusion, that erodes trust and confidence, and creates a communications gap for you. Our report lays out some suggestions that we think will help you be more unified in your work and become a better team to move HMC1 forward. Third, I want you to think back to your high school geometry class for a minute. Do you remember Venn diagrams, these big circles that sometimes overlap? This recommendation seeks to move the three circles of district, school, and parents into more of an overlap mode, um, so that, the goal here is that parents become better informed. Now, the last report that I just heard from these ladies and gentlemen standing up here gives me great hope. I think, I think that parent communication is being improved. I think you're right on, uh, right on target. You need to keep it up, and we've got some specific suggestions for you. Number four, I mentioned a marketing plan and building, uh, branding. One of the frequent comments that we heard in the focus groups was, they don't do a good enough job of talking about all the good stuff going on around here. We also heard, the media just focuses on all the negative. I don't think either of those statements is true. I follow the district, as I said, the district and superintendent on Twitter, and my Twitter feed is overflowing with the good, good news and positive that's, that's going on in this district. But Twitter is ephemeral. It is here today and gone tomorrow. And what sticks in people's memory is not all that good stuff, it's the negative. That's what sticks. And so we've given you some recommendations, I think, like this Points of Pride program, that will take all that good stuff and make it more sticky, so that it's, becomes more front-of-mind for people, and they begin to identify that good news with you rather than the bad news. Recommendation five, we asked your staff, including teachers, principals, and support personnel, how well they thought the district did in, in including them in decisions that impact their work. One response we got was, we get a ton of surveys, but we're not sure what anybody does with that input, if anything. Um, the report outlines some steps to help improve that vitally important element. The goal here is to allow your staff to be better informed, so that they become ambassadors for the district out in the community, um, with all, armed with all the information that they need. Number six, getting influential opinion leaders in the community on your side and enlisted to help you tell your stories, a time-tested best practice, it's done all over the country. We found two fledgling programs here that I think were initially designed to do that, but if they were combined and improved, we think you'd have really what we call a key communicators program. Better organization with some specific steps to strengthen your ties with the business community, including Cerner. We're aware of some recent efforts that you've taken to outreach to them, uh, to, to engage them in some conversation. We commend you for that. Regardless of what you think about the tax situation with Cerner, they're not going anywhere. They're here to stay, and it's incumbent upon you to keep building relationships with them. And we give you some specific recommendations that we think will help in that regard. Number seven, I mentioned the website. What we heard about your website, we hear everywhere across, across the country. Um, it's hard to navigate. What I was looking for is buried 17 clicks deep, and when I get there, it's out of date. Now, that may be true, or it may not be true. But some additional work in that first bullet point, I think, would, would stand you in good stead. I think you need to regularly evaluate the user experience. You need to bring in some focus groups. You need to talk to them about what they like, what they don't like, and begin, uh, to continue to, to, to build that website out. One thing that was clear to us, however, where we think you could really, uh, uh, take a couple of steps to improve, uh, is to expand and improve the budget and finance section of the website. It's pretty thin, um, especially as you approach the bond issue. School finance is complicated stuff. When I was in, uh, doing my PhD work at Kansas State, I had a, a school finance professor who said, in Kansas, there were only three people in the state that understood school finance, and they disagreed with each other. You've got to help, uh, patrons understand where the dollars come from and where the dollars go, and your website's probably the best place that you can do that. Number eight, enhancing communications with non-parents is critical. You know this. Uh, without kids in school, it's hard for people to get an accurate picture of what's going on, to sort rumor from truth and fact from fiction. Uh, so reaching this large population is a challenge. We give you some suggestions and some ideas. We know that work from other, other districts around the country, um, keep working to reach that, that huge non-parent population. Number nine, we took a look at crisis communications, and you actually have two crisis communications plans in this district. We recommend that they be combined and blended, revised, and as you've done in the past, as you go through that process, continue to involve your first responders. When it hits the fan, it's the police and fire and EMT folks that are going to be at your school sites first, and they've got to be, uh, involved in the, in the development of those, of those crisis plans. And finally, number 10, your communications staff is, is going to do some soul-searching as they look at these 10 recommendations and ask themselves some tough questions, because la- just taking these 10 recommendations and layering them on top of everything that they're already doing, uh, is probably not realistic. So we give them some specific suggestions and some steps that they, that they might take, uh, as they consider how and when to put some of this stuff into actual practice. And finally, as you think about, uh, implementing what's contained in this report, these recommendations extend to elements, um, throughout the district, up and down, including you as directors. Taken together, they can seem overwhelming. We want you to take your time. You probably can't do more than two or three in any given, in any given year. We have listed them in what we think is priority order. Feel free to disagree. If you think there's something that, uh, needs more vital attention, but it's further down the list, take it out of order. Phew. All right, let me stop, take a breath. Uh, if you've got questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
First of all, thank you.
By the way, how long did that take? Does anybody run a clock?
No, I, I didn't keep track. I think this is such a very important.
It seemed long to me.
This is a very important document. It's a, a, a nice foundation for us to improve, um, our communication. I don't believe one of these has ever been done in this district.
I'm sorry?
It's just the first time, this is the first time this district, the Hickman Mills School District, has done a communication audit, correct?
I would defer to the superintendent, but I think that's, I think that's true.
And, and based on your presentation and the, uh, scanning over the, over the communication audit, this is a very useful tool for us to continue to move forward, move this district in the right direction.
Thank you.
If I may, I would hope that, uh, after we read and digest this, that we as a board set aside some time to go from A to Z through the report, and along with staff. Uh, the part of this is the board. I think there's a part here for the board. Just the board ought to be meeting, uh, public session to deal with their role as outlined here. And then other parts where it involves staff, at least to, to share in that with staff. I, I think that's so important. I, I wish I'd had an opportunity to have read this before you made your report, but I understand that happens sometime. And maybe, uh, sometime, wanted to have you come back, since you read up the street about three, three hours from here, to come back as we, as we delve into this a little more.
We would be happy to do that, Director Brooks. I, I, I think you're exactly right. Uh, what most districts do, once they get the report and they think about it, uh, they get input from staff, and then they do some public workshops. And they start trying to involve the community, involving staff and talking about how they're going to do this. And if you would like us to come back and be involved in that process, we're more than willing to do that. We're a phone call away.
Yes, Vice President Reagan.
Uh, thanks for the lengthy document. I think, uh, as all the directors have just stated, I know that it'll be helpful in, in the years to come, in the years to pass. Uh, were there any type of students also involved in this, or was it included in some of this?
No, we did not. And I, uh, didn't have a focus group that involved students. No.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next item, 7.4, Mr. Weekly and Mr. Justin.
Hello.
Hello.
You're all in trouble now. It's Justin.
This is Justin.
All right. Thank you, thank you, thank you for having me this evening.
Thank you, thank you, thank you for having me this evening. Are you Dr. Durham or what? All right. So, tonight, I'm going to show you guys a brief presentation of what we presented at our community forum number one, and then also at the South Kansas City Alliance meeting at South Patrol a couple of weeks ago.
If I can.
Yes.
You did a phenomenal job during South Kansas City Alliance meeting, filtering questions, responding to community stakeholders. You did an excellent job. I was proud of you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Yeah, that was a fun one. That was a big group, so.
It was.
We had over 100 people there that evening. So, tonight, for those of you who have, who have not met me, my name is Justin Durham. I'm an architect with Hollison Miller, and, and I've been working with you guys since 2014, so this is our second grant of a long-range plan, and hopefully our second bond issue. So, jumping right into it, tonight's agenda, we're going to go through a few things. Talk really briefly about the planning model that we are going to use, that we have started to use, and that we will continue to use throughout this process. We'll talk a little bit about the timeline, what that looks like, where we're at today, and then where we need to go in the future. We're going to talk a little bit about our current facility status, some things that we have identified as crucial needs that the district is looking at, and those crucial As we move into it, this is typically what happens when we start this process, is we all kind of have our own direction that we think we should move towards in a long-range plan as we move into a bond issue, right? So, we have our fine arts, and they all have their own idea. We have athletics, we have the curriculum piece, we have the facility and the building infrastructure needs. And so, our goal as we move through this process is to get valuable stakeholder feedback, right, from several different groups, which we'll talk about in a minute. And through those conversations, through the meetings, through the, what we're going to go through in the next few months, is to take everybody's kind of individual direction and start to align those. Never will we all be in exactly the same lockstep direction, right? But if we can, through conversation and through meetings and, and through transparency, get everyone to start moving in the same direction, that's the goal that we want to have through this process. So, the, the part that we're going to use is, this is a national planning model that we've used for a little over 20 years now, and there's four very distinct groups that we will be engaging with throughout this process. So, the top one is the administration, so we've already had a few meetings with the administration, with the facility vision team, with the finance team, and they're the big picture, right? They are our guiding light. Those are the ones that kind of set the precedent, the direction that we want to go. We filter feedback through them, and they kind of give us our final direction. The community is a huge part, so we've had a couple of community meetings already. As we've discussed, we had community forum number one at Ruskin High School a few weeks ago, and then we did meet at South Patrol for that South Kansas City Alliance meeting, where we had a little over 100 patrons that were there that evening to hear our presentation. We'll talk about the patrons, and, or we'll talk to the patrons in the district, so that will be our PTAs, PTO, building level, booster clubs, et cetera. So, we'll get those groups, and we'll get that involvement, and we'll share a little bit how we will do that in a few minutes. And then, what I believe is probably the most important group is that student and staff. Those are the ones that live and breathe in those buildings every single day. They are there, they would have probably the best feedback for us when it comes to those individual buildings. And while we have an ongoing process with Mr. Weekly and how we have visited those schools very regularly, we are going to engage them again before this process is over. So, for us, it's all about the process, 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 process. So, right now, we are in the visioning process. About a month ago, we had our first FVT meeting, and we kind of came up with our game plan of what we wanted to do. The long-range plan, what we would like to provide for you guys, and I'll show you what we did back in 2015, 2016, something very similar to that. So, we will leave you guys, the district, with a very clear plan of what we would like to move forward with in 2020, and then plans for 2024, 2028, 2032, as we move forward, that true long-range plan piece. Along with that, we have decided that we would like to potentially go for a bond issue, and so, we'll figure out how we do that, and what projects, and how we prioritize and move through that. That visioning piece is where we're at right now, so we are starting to communicate with different levels of the community via our onsite meetings, and one thing that we met about this morning is we will start to have some surveys that we will put out. And piggybacking on the presentation that was just presented, we'll very clearly communicate that feedback that we hear with, with all the different groups. Once we gather all that data, right, so the better the data that we get, the more data we get, the better output that we can have. So, once we gather that data, we'll start to explore options. We know that we would have potentially about $30 million for the bond issue, but we have significantly more than that in needs. It's about 108 million, and I'll show you that later. What that means is we're going to have to make some serious priorities, right? So, we're going to have to make some serious considerations, some serious cuts to that big giant long list that we have of all the projects, and really boil that down to what's most important for us today. Next, we'll define that plan. Defining the plan is really kind of picking the big moves that we want to do. So, if you were to fill a jar full of rocks, and you want to maximize that jar full of rocks, right, you're going to take the big pieces first, you're going to fill it up with the big rocks first, and then you're going to scatter in the smaller rocks, and you kind of jiggle it around, and you're going to fit everything you can into it. And that's the process that we will take as we start to define the plan. We're going to find those things that are the key communication pieces that the district and the patrons have identified, whether that be building infrastructure, safety and security, athletics, fine arts, whatever those are. We'll take those big moves, we'll put those in that jar first, and then we'll start to sprinkle in some of the other pieces and really fill that up. And then, adopting the best plan is the part where we come to you as the board, we present those final ideas, and then you guys make the motion to go to the, the state and put that language on the ballot in August. I know the, the print is very small, I know you guys have a copy of that in front of you too, but this is just kind of a more detailed outline of, of some of the meetings that we currently have planned, the cadence that we will be following, that Dan, Marissa, and I, and the group have been working with. And it just goes month by month to show you how we plan to get to where we want to be in May. So, when we talk about process and the tools that we use, the next big step that we are going to take, and we had a meeting about this this morning, is staff interviews and patron interviews via Survey Monkey. And so, next Monday, we will start to build out our surveys that we would like to have live by next Thursday. So, the goal is for that, is to have 10 to 12 questions that we clearly ask different parts of, of whatever the district could be. So, we'll ask patrons of, "What building are you most familiar with?", and then we'll narrow it down to some topics and some questions, and then we'll have some open-ended questions towards the end, so that we can get honest, good feedback about whatever topic they would like to discuss with us. And we will do that with the staff and with the community. We will take that information then, and then bring that back to you guys. So, we will disseminate that in a few different ways, where we can show you graphically, by graphs, we can show you the numbers of what was graded to be the most important, what was graded to be the least important, what families were thinking now, and then we can move forward with that information. So, really quick, I just wanted to share with you guys a little bit about what we had done in 2015 and 2016, and how that will parallel what we believe we're going to deliver for you guys as we move forward with the update to the long-range plan. So, this is a slide actually from a board presentation I gave on June 3 of 2015, and it, it shows you guys what we had decided to move forward with in terms of, of a long-range plan. So, in 2016, we did a $16 million performance contract, we did a bond issue of $17 million, and then, working with bond counsel back then, Lorenzo had thought we would be able to go for about $10 million in 2020, about $10 million in 2024, and about $10 million in 2028. Lorenzo, you all know him, he is very conservative, right? So, that 20 million has now turned into 30. So, we will be able to go for about $30 million. I do know that he is starting to project out what these could be for us in 2024, 2028, and 2032, so that we can update this and we can start to plan around those, those more current numbers. In a, this was November 5 of 2015, so this is more of our defining the, the plan phase that we were in. And it took the $16 million performance contract and the $17 million bond issue, and it really started to boil it down to those big moves that we wanted to make throughout the district. So, you'll see up at the top that this was option F1. So, that meant that we came to you guys with options A, B, C, D, E, F, and you guys ended up selecting as a board, as a district, we ended up moving forward with option F. And so, what that was, was at the, or the performance contracting piece was mechanical systems, lighting, and restroom upgrades throughout the district. For our $17 million bond issue, our big moves were, at the time, it was the freshman center in Santa Fe. We did major renovations there, we did work at each of the elementary schools, the major renovation here to Baptiste, and then we did a large classroom addition, locker room, wrestling renovations at Ruskin High School. So, as we move forward, we will bring to you guys options of the big moves, and then we'll start to make some decisions that will kind of parallel this for this round of, of the long-range plan, the bond issue planning. So, since 2016, in the long-range plan that we had created back then, we have continually updated, so Dan and I have walked the buildings about every six months. We'll walk the buildings, we'll kind of go through and reprioritize kind of the things that have been done, right? So, Dan has a list of things that he continually fixes and repairs and knocks off the list, but then as buildings age, more things come up. So, we've been updating the plans since 2016, and currently, we have identified about $108 million worth of things. So, if we could, had enough money to do everything that we wanted to do and needed to do, it would be about $108 million. And that goes from more restroom renovations, mechanical plumbing, athletics, fine arts, it's an all-encompassing list. So, some of the crucial considerations that we have already identified kind of as, as the facility vision team and the administrative team is safety and security, right? So, that's one of the big things. So, safety, that could be playgrounds, parking lots, sidewalks, it could be exterior lighting, it could be secure entries at each of our buildings. So, we've kind of put those into a group, and we're looking at about 6.8 million if we did all of that. We have heating, ventilation, and air conditioning, so our HVAC, that would be removing and replacing or renovating a lot of the mechanical systems throughout the district on all the different buildings, and that would total about 13.2 million if we were able to do all of that. Building infrastructure, it's a, it's a broad group, but it consists of roofs, parking lots, mation repairs, windows, things like that that are on the envelope of the building, right? So, those are things that, that we would like to do earlier, just because we don't want to go into a space and renovate a media center and make it beautiful and awesome, but then not take care of the roof, and then we have the rains that then stain ceiling tiles and things like that. So, there, there's probably an order to this, and that will start to kind of flesh itself out as we go. We've identified about $3 million for the fine arts. The major piece of that was to do some renovations to the auditorium at Ruskin High School, so lighting, curtains, sound, seats, finishes, things like that. And then, we've identified about $11.3 million in athletic improvements. That could be turf improvements, baseball fields, track, those kind of things, storage buildings, grandstands, that we've kind of talked to the coaches a little bit about, and then we will continue to refine those as we go.
I want to say this, that just this short list is 54 million dollars beyond the 30 that we think we need. I think that's the hard part about this, is that we have all kinds of needs, we're going to make some very hard decisions for the plan that will have available to us and try to satisfy. You know, someone's not going to be, not going to be happy in this process, this is part of the process. But please know that the hard decisions we're having, we'll call the input that we get from all the groups, staff, parents, everybody, we're going to take all, and then try to narrow down exactly what we think is the most going to affect our students' performance.
So, one of the comments that we received in our first two community forums was, "How are we getting information out?" Because there was only a few people at Ruskin High School, I think we had about 35 people in attendance. And then, one of the comments was, "Well, how are you pushing this information out?" And so, since then, we've worked with Marissa, and we have identified ways to kind of increase the overall exposure to what we're doing. So, we've talked to the Jackson County Advocate, they're going to be putting in an ad for us. We've talked to Mr. Sharp, and he's going to get his paper, the Martin City Telegraph, to run some information. Mr. Sharp's son, Mark, the state representative, he is going to write in some information in his newsletter that he puts out. We do have a Facebook event that we have, along with Twitter and other social media that the district uses. The district is currently working on a video that is dedicated to the long-range plan piece, so that we can watch that and, and send that out, so that we can get the information out there. Information does go out in the monthly newsletters, right? So, that gets out to hundreds of people. And then, we have reached out to the four largest neighborhood associations, associations that we know, to start to, to build that grassroots effort. That, along with our efforts already at the first community forum, where we ask all those in attendance to bring a friend, right? So, grow it that way. And we also said the same thing at the South Kansas City Coalition meeting, where we asked those people to, you know, reach out to friends and family members, or people that they know throughout the district, and, and reach out and come to those next meetings. So, we really need that input from them. And then, some highlighted dates here. So, what we have is February 27. We will have that link available for you guys to take the online surveys. We try to keep those to about 10 to 15 questions, and we try to limit those to about 10 or 15 minutes. Reason being, excuse me, is we kind of track these as they go through Survey Monkey, and we can tell that if, as you hit about that 10 or 15-minute mark, our participation drops very drastically. So, you reach a limit to the attention span that we will get from some of the people that are taking it, so we want to be sure that, that we fit within that. On March 2, we will be at the Community Alliance and giving a presentation to that group. March 5, we will have our community forum number two, and that will be held at Millennium. March 18, we will be at the Southern Community Coalition again, so we will be giving another update to that group at South Patrol. And then, I did make an error on this, it is, Dan reminded me, we don't, I don't do these on Saturdays. That's April 4, so we're going to move that to April 2. So, April 2, we will, we will have our community forum number 3.
At Warford.
At Warford. Yes. And so, that kind of gives you a synopsis of where we're going to go in the next month or so.
And I just want to say to the board that we will, next month, as we get closer and work with Stiefel and Lorenzo...
Talking to Mike, Mr. ...
I'm sorry.
Because it's me.
Thank you.
As, as Lorenzo cannot be here this month, he's in some training that he has to be at. So, Lorenzo's going to come next month and, I, talk about the dollar amounts, that's why we didn't want to bring it up at this time. It's really important that we have him here to answer those questions from a professional standpoint. Certainly, Shelley and I could answer some of those questions, but I think it's important that he be here to answer those questions that you might have. But in talking with him, he feels very comfortable with the dollar amount that we've been talking about, but I want him to talk about why that is, why that amount is appropriate. And just to kind of give you an appetizer to that discussion, please understand that we're looking well beyond 2020. We really want to secure a financial stability in this process and identifying and satisfying capital projects long ways down the road. I want to make sure, and Justin wants to make sure, and Shelley, all of us want to make sure that every three to four years, we're coming back to you with a no-tax increase with a significant amount of money, and 30 million is a significant amount of money to do capital projects, that we continue to do that every three to four years to get that $108 million down. And if we have the right financial strategy to do that, the health and wealth of this district will have a long sustainability. And that's what's really important in this. And I, I want to kind of set the table for that, for Lorenzo's discussion, but it's something we've had a lot of discussion with him about, along with our architects, and we think that's certainly the most, best approach for the district all the way around.
A couple of things that, that we did ask to expand on a little bit was brought up this evening in the previous presentation, and that was, "How does school finance work?" So, at our South Kansas City Alliance meeting, the Coalition meeting, I did go into a little bit about what are bond issues? Why do school districts use bond issues to procure money? And what can that money be used for? So, that's something that I'll be expanding on a little bit as we move forward in future meetings, just so that people know what this money's going towards and what we're going to be able to do with it, what it can be used for, and then what it can't be used for. So, I think that's very important to start to educate those that are in attendance with us on what that actually is. So, with that, do you guys have any questions for me this evening that I can answer?
First of all, thanks a lot, Mr. Justin, for presenting the document to the Board of Education today. Some of the things I have heard since we have had these forums is, some of the things is, could you include also how much it would be if we was to do a new elementary school or a new high school? And the reason why this was brought to me, they stated that if we're trying to attract people and keep people here in this district, a lot of the community stakeholders was looking at it like, "Hey, look, we have 80-year-old buildings, some are 70-years-old, and then you're putting a Band-Aid on some of the things." But if we're trying to attract students and keep staff like we're saying that we're trying to do, if that could be something that was put into this presentation also?
Absolutely.
Madam President, just a couple of comments. I think I mentioned to Mr., is it Movenon?
Mm-hmm.
Yes, I, I mentioned about coming up with the, the elected officials, and I think that it'd be good, Mr. Weekly, and, and if we could set up a meeting just for those folk, the two state people and the four city councilperson, to let them know what we're doing on that. The other thing is that, unless I'm wrong, the, the South Kansas City Alliance, Alliance is, is based on the west side of, of, of home. Now, that's a school district over there, I don't know the name of that school district, where the superintendent's going, but, I don't know about, but anyway, that, pretty much, you'll find the person that represents that, that area. Southern Communities Coalition is the one that's coming east, and it represents all the neighborhood, so that's the one we ought to be, not that we ought to leave the other... So that's the one we ought to be, not that we ought to leave the others out because the superintendent's going over there, but because we really give attention to those who represent this district. And I've attended both meetings, but you'll hear a lot more about what's going on over there. I may be wrong in terms of attendance, but as I count heads and look at people and listen to questions, I said, but the bases are the, and one other point. The majority of the folks that attend those meetings don't have kids in the district. They're retired folks, they, some of them would have moved but rented here and homes paid for and on fixed income, nowhere to go. But we need to make sure that they're the ones that are voting for this. And sometimes folks who don't feel they have a stake, who don't have a kid, but these are their children too, and they need to realize that. And so I think the more we can, we can put that before that group, Southern Communities Coalition, is that these are your kids. And although you don't have yours, you've got great-grandsons and don't live in the district, but these are your kids because you're going to pay for them one way or the other. And you pay for them going to one of the institutions or pay for them staying in school and enjoying the benefits of it.
You're absolutely right.
Can I ask a clarif-- a clarify question? You said Fifth and Sixth District, right? City Council, does somebody else--
Fifth and Sixth District, yes.
Right. Somebody else you mentioned?
The state representatives.
Okay.
Now, we don't have a representative for the third, well, we do now, Mark.
Mark, yeah, yeah.
He comes up for reelection again. But also Michael Brown, Richard Brown.
Richard Brown.
Richard Brown, which has part of that district.
I just wanted to make sure I get the right group, so, okay. Appreciate that.
And then we don't have a senator either now. Holzman's gone, but, so that's what we call taxation without representation.
I'll see if I can meet with them and share all this information with them. I'll do that. Thank you, I appreciate that.
You are absolutely right. The individuals that were in attendance that night, a lot of them were older, they probably didn't have students in the district. But the best part about that group is the engagement level that they had. They were excited to hear any bit of information that we could give on the school district, the community in itself. And there was lots of good communication and feedback. They had all sorts of good ideas and things like that, and that's what we want to hear. We want to reach those that are engaged because those are the ones that will truly help us grow that grassroots effort as we start to build the transparency and the excitement about what we're about to go through, right? And so those are the ones that we really want to reach because those are the ones that will tell neighbors, that tell friends, and then they will help us grow our base.
And unfortunately, when I represented this district, I did have some demographics done. The folks who have children in school tend not to vote as often and register vote as those who don't have kids. And it's true today, I bet, if you look at the data. So I'm talking about from 1999 to 2007, when I was in office. I suspect now 13 years later, it's pretty much the same.
As a parent, it is hard to drop the kids off at school and go vote and then, you know, go back to work and try to fit that into a day. It is difficult.
Director Watry?
Hey, so I just wanted to go back to your PowerPoint. This is the PowerPoint more specifically for us today?
Yes, I kind of culled it down a little bit from the one that we presented at the community forum, just because I didn't figure you'd want me standing up here talking for an hour.
No, and the only thing I really wanted to check up on was, I know that you had put in here like the 2016 bond projects, like--
Yes.
The things, adding more, I think Director Brooks talked about it last time, but adding more visual for those to, people to see that--
Yes.
The work that has been done, because a lot of people are more visual than they are.
Right, yeah. And so in community forum number two, that was one of the charges that I will accomplish when we go to community forum number two on the 5th of March.
Right.
Is I will have some visuals in there to share with that. And for this one, I just wanted to pull the raw data and share it with you guys, and so that we can kind of see what we had planned and accomplished on that last bond issue.
Sounds good.
Yes.
Last thing. I saw, I'm trying to get to the calendar that you have on here. Do you have anything that is going to be presented? Because I know we talked about March 5th, the community forum, but also on March 7th, we have our Family Summit. Is there going to be anything there to help promote?
Oh, the Family Summit?
Oh, I'm, I think I'm-- Go ahead, go ahead, you can.
I'm doing it.
Okay, great. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm just crossing my teeth, that my eyes didn't see it here.
I'm the setup, I'm the bond 2020 guy, and I'm the breakdown.
Okay, you got it.
All right.
All right, Dan, you're the DJ, so.
I am DJ.
All right.
Thank you.
Marissa volunteered me for that, so.
Okay, thank you. I don't see any more questions.
Very good. Thank you, guys. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, so we're going to go ahead and move as quickly as we can through the rest of this agenda, and hopefully we can get out of here prior to 8:30. At this time, we're seeking approval of the consent items, removals of consent.
Madam Chairman, I make a motion that we approve the 8.06 consent items.
Second.
Okay. Ms. Page?
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
All right, moving us right along to new business items. All right, item 9.1. Requested Board Action Relative to the Approval of Technology Surplus Items.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I am presenting requested Board Action related to technology surplus items. The technology department will be sending the items listed below out of district for surplus. These items will be removed from inventory once they are approved for surplus and removal from the district. The items listed are 15 old Dell unusable towers, three failed universal power supplies, seven broken monitors, and 12 old unusable laptops. The above equipment will be removed from the district. It is unusable, failed, and no longer viable to be used. The superintendent recommends the approval of the removal of surplus items no longer serviceable to the school system and authorizes the appropriate disposal of these items.
Madam President, I move that we approve the recommendation of the superintendent on item 9.1.
A second.
Director Graves.
Aye.
Director Abram.
Aye.
Director Watry.
Aye.
Director Carter.
Aye.
Director Brooks.
Aye.
Vice President Reagan.
Aye.
President Briggs.
Aye.
Motion carries, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome, Ms. Wilsley.
Good evening. This is the financial report for January.
And while she pulls up the document, important to note that in the PowerPoint tonight and Mrs. Wilsley's report, she will be providing an update in terms of where we are with the project, bleh, projections for shaping our future. If you can recall, this time last year, the projected reduction amount was $5.5 million. So Ms. Wilsley is providing the board and community an update tonight in terms of capture savings or projected savings thus far, in terms of our work in reducing budgets through shaping our future. And she's providing that information, as well as an update in terms of different ads this year that were not budgeted for, and she's showing that information included within the PowerPoint this evening, as well as the added piece in terms of TIF updates. And so very, very important information that Ms. Wilsley has provided for the board and community tonight. I was excited as I reviewed the PowerPoint. Excellent job, even before you started.
Okay, so the total revenues as of January 31st. Right now, the working budget is, it's sitting at $90,498. The receipts for the month of January were at $15,400,000, the majority of that being tax revenue. The year-to-date receipts are sitting at $51,808,000, and the remaining budget to be received is $38,606,000. Percent of funds received is 57.3% compared to 59.6% at this time last year. The total expenses for through January, the working budget's sitting at $84,909,000. January expenses, we paid $5.9 million. A year-to-date, we're at $41,606,000. The remaining budget to be spent is $43,303,000. Percent of expenses paid so far is 49% compared to 47.7% of this time last year. The budget changes, we just had one change that highlighted here at the bottom, the tax anticipation note interest. $10,937,50 was added to the budget, which decreased our fund balance by .086%. This is the piece I put in about the TIF education fund. It's a lot of detail right now. I just kind of wanted to go over all the different categories, where we were at, and then the final page of this will give you a summary. So the category one is college and career readiness, and we will be getting $1 million for this category. In November, we did an invoice, $94,005,000, and in June, we did another one for this category of $35,468,000. And we just submitted an invoice for the 1920 school year for $333,000 for this section. So the total funds remaining from the million that we can still invoice for on this category are $536,000. Category two is the STEM. We're getting $500,000 for this category. Again, the November invoice, we received $23,793,000. In June, we received $60,631,000. And then for this year so far, we invoiced for $69,618,000. So the ones with the asterisks beside them, we have received those funds. The only one we haven't is, of course, the one that we just did here currently. So the funds remaining for category two, the STEM, that we can invoice against are Category three is the discretionary fund. We have $1,005,000 that we can draw on at this time. We have done nothing in that section. We have done, so there is no invoicing for that area. And then category four is the professional studies. The first year, first invoice was $17,500,000. The second invoice was for $203,391,000, and the one we just submitted was for $49,525,000. So we have a remaining out of this fund, which was $3 million, I'm sorry, for that total category, of $2,729,000 that we can invoice for still. So this is the summary. So the total education fund, of course, is $6 million over eight years. The total invoice so far, including the one that we just submitted, was $887,632,000. Remaining out of that $6 million is $5,112,000 that we can still invoice for. The total in fund based on the ETS that have been received was $1,085,306,000. So far, we've received $435,305 of that. So there's $650,000 still available in that fund for us to draw on. So that $452,000 invoice will go towards that $650,000 that's out there. That's it on that piece of it. I kind of went through it quick, I'm trying. This slide here is the comparison of our shaping the future. It's kind of small, I don't know if I can make it any bigger, but basically, the first column was the projected savings that we worked on, showing the positions that we would cut and the total dollar that was estimated to go along with it based on average salaries. So you'll see, we had 76 positions that were going to be cut, savings of $4,162,000. And then down below a little bit, with transportation and travel and busment, we were going to save another $1,003,000. So that total savings was $5.4 million. Our actual savings, you'll see that we actually cut 96.24 positions. A lot of that is because when we projected out, like the pair of professionals, you'll compare the zero that in our projected savings, we actually saved almost 12 positions when we closed the buildings. So that took us to a $5.1 million in actual savings. The transportation is the same. Travel is a little bit less. That means that we didn't add any money to the budget, but money was transferred from another line into travel, so travel was just a little bit higher budget-wise, but it was not an add to the budget. And that is the same with teaching supplies. We had said we would cut $300,000. At this time, we're at $222,000, but there was a transfer from capital into supplies, and so it wasn't an actual add to the budget. So a total of 1.2 in cuts where we're at, giving us a total of $6.3 million in cuts. And then we did the step plus 1.5% increase across the board for salaries, which was a 1.2 million add. For a total savings right now, $5,079,000. And then this is just the fund balance, the end showing where we're at right now, and we're sitting at a 14.636% with the projection in 2021 of a 19.078. The 2021 school year at a 22.291, and the projected of, for 2020, 22, 23 at 24.31. Okay, I think that is the last page. Can you scroll it? Is there another page? Okay. So that's the financial report for January. Does anyone have any questions for me?
Madam President, if I might.
Yes.
Did you say yes?
Yes.
You hate to call. Ms. Wilsley, thank you so very much. You mentioned eight years on the educational fund.
Yes.
So that, based on your projection, you're talking about making, submitting, let me use the term invoices, to the committee over that eight-year period, they would go, you had up to the $6 million.
Yes, that's the way it's supposed to work. Now, with the ETS being taxes that they're collecting, I don't see where we're collecting $6 million over eight years. I could be wrong, maybe. It'll get bigger as we go, but the projection is that it's supposed to actually get smaller as the years go on. So, but the assumption was, yes, $6 million over eight years.
So, now, is there the, is there the possibility that it could be less than six years, less than eight years?
I would think it would end up being more to get to that $6 million mark. That what we're receiving right now, we've received a million, a little over a million in the past, what, three years?
Yes, I understand. My, I wasn't thinking about that. So it's some, we're not going to get any more than $6 million, but it may go beyond the number of years because of the drawdown.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And it's based on occupancy. And so once the other buildings are open, I hope that there would be an increase in the tax. But the percent that we will be getting is going down every year as the, as the contract stated as it went, so.
And so what the attempt is to get out of the commitment that, because they want to sell off some of the land over there, which means that if that, if the city approves that, and EDC approves that, means it'll be less because if, because when they, when they first admitted it, it was based on the total project. So if they, if they end up selling that land, which I hope they don't, I hope, no, I hope they, they want to, but I hope the city doesn't allow them. Maybe we ought to have somebody, do we have a representative at EDC when we speak about that?
I myself and Dr. Cargill, or speaks, on the TIF commission, yes. I know in January, they actually removed the revision that they had, amendment that they had taken forward. But I'm not sure what, did they bring anything back in February, Cerner?
It was just in the paper, wasn't it Tuesday, where they're asking permission to sell off that land, where they're, where they're planning to develop on? And I think if that's the case, and I need to talk to someone at EDC, or you know, would that, would that reduce our amount? You understand my question?
Oh, and reduce our amount on which piece?
Well, see, I--
On the--
How much we get the TIF? Are you talking about that money?
Yeah.
On the $6 million?
Yeah.
No, that's based on occupancy, so that's--
That's occupancy, okay.
Yes.
All right, okay.
What I understood, the amendment that they brought was to sell off the property where, in between the hotels, that are supposed to be there. But the TIF commission, for Jack, for us, the Hickman Mills in Jackson County, did not want to approve that.
No.
And so in January, they brought it back and said, we're just going to take it back. We're not even going to submit an amendment. So at this time, there's nothing on the floor before the EDC.
There was nothing on the February agenda related to Cerner.
So I don't know if they're planning on bringing something back because I don't, I don't know personally if they could actually do that since it's TIF without going through the EDC.
Let's see, now, Hillcrest Country Club is, that's in, that's in Raytown District, isn't it?[1785.21]
No, that's in, it's in ours.
Is that our district? Yeah, 'cause they, that, that was just... Yeah, yeah, yeah. Because that, that, that was just sold to the, um, to a group. And, and the group that it was sold to, uh, are in the business of building apartments. And I know they wouldn't buy it as a, as a country club and keep it as a country club. It wouldn't be profitable. But I was just thinking if that, that happened, but, uh, well, okay. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Thank you. Chair is now seeking a motion to approve of the January twenty financial report.
Mr. President, I move that we accept the financial report, uh, that's been submitted, um, by the, um, uh, January third, first, two thousand twenty.
It has been second. Uh, now, it's open up for any type of discussion. Directors? I'll call the row. Mrs. Peyton. Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Abram?
Aye.
Director, um...
Brooks.
No. Well, Brooks. Director Brooks? All right, Director Watry?
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Care is, um, six to zero. Now, Ms. Carter, come on up for the MSB nine point three policy update second reading.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Oh, no. I thought, I saw the mouse moving, so I didn't want to. So, you all, um, at your last board meeting, presented for first reading, um, at the recommendation of the Policy Committee, uh, Administrative Procedure E, BBA, um, the revision that was recommended by, uh, MSBA. The only change to that is, um, that MS, uh, MSBA is recommending that for, in addition to the, uh, medical emergency medications that are housed on site, um, naloxone, which is a medicine that, uh, reverses the effects of an opioid overdose. So, the Policy Committee submitted that, uh, to this board. It was presented for first read, um, last month at the January meeting. As you all are aware, Dr. Cargill presented additional information, um, to you, based on some research, uh, that she conducted, um, some of which was talking to the building nurses. And their recommendation was that, that medication be, uh, housed only at the secondary school level. So, I'll present that information to you as well. What you have in front of you for recommendation for approval is the policy as presented, um, by MSBA, which would mean housing that medication at all district, um, schools. So... I think it's at your pleasure what you want to do with this. And if there are any questions, I'm certainly glad to answer them.
So, any, any question? Go ahead, Director Watry.
So, with it being housed at the secondary schools, um, if by chance hypothetically speaking, we have an opioid overdose at a elementary school, would we be able to take that, that, would we be able to transfer the, the, uh, naloxone? I can't pronounce this word.
It would probably be in the best interest to call nine-one-one.
Yeah.
'Cause the, the reason why, which, the reason why I'm asking is because I understand that we, um... The reason why I'm asking is because with, with new, with, with fentanyl and things that are like penny, like dots on a penny that are, that are able to overdose someone, I don't want the mistake of not having ha- it housed at an elementary school and just in case anything, whether it be misdiagn... I'm sorry, I work in the middle, uh, the medical field and there's been plenty of cases where kids have been given, uh, narcotics by accident, whether it's housed wrong or otherwise. I just wanna ensure that we are proactive when we approach this, this policy. More of a statement than a question, I guess. That's it.
Anybody else? Any other questions?
I'm not clear on what you're saying because if something would happen at the elementary school, you would call nine-one-one. So, how would that conflict with having that?
So, so, when, when a person overdoses on opioids, they're non-responsive, which means that CPR or anything, CPR does not work in that, in that, in that case. So, if we were to eliminate time, uh, time of someone being non-responsive, even with calling nine-one-one, I'm sorry, but in our district, calling nine-one-one kinda takes a while and can take a while. So, I wanna ensure that we are looking at the possibilities and the pro- the possibilities of being proactive if it does occur at elementary school. That's all.
So, what is your, I guess, Director Watry is for? What are you, what would you be asking as far as?
So, Dr. Cargill's recommendation was that it was, that it was housed at the secondary schools. I agree. But also, I want to, I want my colleagues to be also aware that by housing it by the secondary schools, yes, it's, it's a proactive approach at secondary schools. But at an elementary school, in an aspect in which something happens, I wanna, also wanna understand that we are able to respond as a school as quickly as possible. That's what I'm saying. Because opioid overdoses tend, are usually non-responsive in a, in a sense of when I say non-responsive, I'm saying no pulse, no breathing, no anything. The longer time, seven minutes, seven minutes, without oxygen to the brain, causes brain damage. So, I'm, I'm making sure that my colleagues understand that if we decide to...
I understand.
Oh, okay.
If I can, Vice President Reagan, um, board, I did not make a recommendation. I provided information just to give you as much as you needed and so that you could make the best decision that you felt possible for the board. And so, that, um, that was the, the viewpoint of the nursing team in terms of where they thought the greatest need would be for the meds. And so, in addition to the other research that I shared in terms Casey, of KCPD and the fire department, that was information for you to use to make the decision that the board chooses to make in terms of how and if.
Sorry, my, that was my misunderstanding. And, and what I just wanna do is make sure that as, as information is provided, we're being as transparent as possible.
Absolutely.
So, if I could, if you correct me, you would...
We're fine. This, we're, we're going through a first, a second...
Second reading.
Yeah, you're at a second reading now. So, if someone wants to...
Wants to take it, yeah, that's...
Make a motion to approve this as presented, um, or with any kind of amendments, if that's appropriate at this time.
Anyone who would like to make any type of amendments, any type of corrections, any, at this time? Everybody clear?
So, with that being...
Go ahead.
With that being said, I'll, I'll go ahead. I'll make the motion to approve, um, it as printed. If anyone feels the need to second it, or I had an amendment, please feel free to do so.
I'll second it.
It has been seconded. Any discussion? Go, go ahead.
I think the motion said as printed, or as printed or presented?
As, as presented.
Okay, okay.
I have a little discussion and I'm gonna call on, uh, Mrs. Patty. Uh, I can't get your name out, but, yeah, Mrs. Buck. Could you come to the podium for one moment? Because I would like to look at it on the aspect of the, um, elementary part, since you did bring something up. You know, what does she feel since she is in the elementary part, if that's okay, huh?
Welcome, Ms. Patty.
Welcome, Ms. Patty.
Welcome.
So, just based on what Director Watry was talking about as far as the seven minutes and the non-responsive and all that, and the ambulance response, um, what, how would you feel too as far as when the, the housing of, as is stated up there?
I would be comfortable keeping it in. I have elementary schoo- I'm one of the school nurses, if you haven't met me. I have two elementary schools. I would be comfortable housing it. I would think the need would probably, if there is a need, might likely be at the secondary schools because even though we have strict policy in place about kids carrying their own medication, people do what they do. And parents don't understand that all the time. I've had elementary students bring opioids to school because they were post-op, and they just had them in their backpack, and we had no permission. We had no post-op instruction. And that student honestly brought it to me, but if they hadn't and if they had shared, it could have been most interesting. So, having that potential, it's relatively inexpensive. We keep EpiPens at huge expense if we can't get them free. And I've never used one in all the years I've been a nurse here in the school district, which is quite a while now. But, um, the, uh, cost of the naloxone nasal spray for a two-dose thing is a tenth of an EpiPen pack. So, um, economically, it's not a big deal. Security-wise, we keep all kinds of medications under lock and key for everyday use for ADHD kids. So, that security is not an issue. We wouldn't put it in a public place. A child or anybody who has taken too many opioids and overdoses goes into respiratory failure, and they need immediate action. You only have a couple of minutes. We have CPR-trained people. We have AEDs in our buildings. So, hopefully, we, we maintain until we get help if we don't have it available. But it's a relatively easy thing to stock if you wanted to.
Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Patty. Any other questions for Ms. Patty? Any, any, any of you directors?
May I raise another question?
Go ahead.
If, if, if that be the case, uh, so, Senator Cargill, you, you have no objection to it being in, in elementary school?
No, I mean, we serve at your pleasure. I know that the nursing team will lock it away as they should, so that's not a worry for me.
I'm sorry.
It's, yeah, it, I, I'm not worried that the nursing team won't lock the medicine up the way it should be. So, that, that isn't a worry.
I don't think you said any, you, you haven't said one way or the other, except you said that if it was given, if, if it was there, then it would be in safekeeping as, as it would be...
Like all medications, we would treat it appropriately. And we don't advertise that we would have it. Like, we don't advertise, we have EpiPens. We don't advertise. The AED sits in the hallway, but we don't advertise that, "Come on and have a heart attack. We'll take care of you." So, um, I don't think that we're at particular risk for having it. We've not had an, uh, one of the nurses said that a visitor appeared to have an opioid situation going on, but they let, um, the police department handle that one. So, that you just never know who might be at risk. And sometimes it is somebody who's post-op that doesn't understand. There are people who party a little too hearty with that kind of stuff, but, um, and they are truly at risk. But there is the innocent overdoses as well that if it's that easy to take care of, it seems like a logical thing to have.
Well, that being said, uh, Mr. President, I would, I would like to amend the motion to include the elementary school if the maker of the motion would, would accept my amendment.
It's, it's already in there.
It's stated to, for our building.
The, the amendment, if we were to make an amendment, it would be to, to make it to where it was only secondary levels. That's, and that was my assumption, as well as yours, yeah.
So, the recommended change, um, says that the medication will be housed, um, in buildings where available. So, there's no restriction as to what buildings it's held in.
No need for an amendment.
No need for an amendment.
Okay, all right, okay. Then I, then I, then I call for the question. Ms. Wilson?
Uh, the chair is seeking a motion for, uh, the second, uh...
I'm sorry.
Okay, so now, we'll take it to vote. Uh, Director Carter?
Aye.
Director Graves?
Aye.
Director Abrams?
Aye.
Director Brooks?
Aye.
Director Watry?
Aye.
The chair votes aye. Care is six to zero. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Moving right along to, uh, discussion items. Ten point one, Student Discipline Summit of Report. Ten point one.
That's a discussion item. Whom, whomever added, wanted it added on the...
Did anyone?
Student Discipline Summit of Report.
I think it was you, Mr. Reagan. You wanted to subside the Summit of Report on Discipline.
Oh, yeah, they were supposed to be, uh, we had asked in the education, uh, I mean, in that thing, that all, everyone was presented a, uh, that little piece that you all showed us and, did you all have that to show the board, that piece?
Remember, we were going to get it back from legal, then we were going to let our committee look at it before we present it to the whole board?
Uh, Vice President, are we talking about the, uh, the handbook?
That's what it's for. Which one?
The, I think he's talking about the handbook.
What, what was this for? That's what it said.
If I might expound, um, the request for the su- for the Student Discipline Summit of Reports was based on, um, email request, request, asking for updates on student discipline. And it was recommended that that information be limited because of the board's, um, direction if ever anyone appeals. And, um, it was suggested that it be brought and put, uh, that it be brought to the full board and put on the agenda to discuss what could actually be included in such of a, such of a report, et cetera. If I'm not mistaken.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, that's right. So, that would go back, I'm gonna go back to Mrs. Carter, 'cause I had discussed that with her, and I think she had stated it in the force.
Well, what I'd recommended was that you all, that, um, I think there was a request for a summative report, and I recommended that that request be put on the agenda as a discussion item for you as directors to make a decision as to whether or not, as a collective body, you want some kind of summative report on student discipline. And if you did, what, what that report would include, um, in terms of information.
Was you ready? You ready?
Awesome.
Go ahead, Director Watry. I, I'm looking at you.
So, um, from what I understand, I guess I'll open up discussion. This is not my topic. From what I understand, is that we're trying, we are to have discussion right now, uh, about what we would like to see in a discipline report. So, I would open the question to my colleagues. What would you like to see in a discipline report? That's literally what we're having.
Well, I guess mine was...
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Want a discipline report.
Right, if you wanted this. Uh, basically, I, I mean, you know, I, I know that the discipline reports is always given, but we don't get the feedback of what happened. Like, if the discipline was carried out, uh, how many days? You know, we say, okay, well, we send you to this, this meeting, and then after we send you to the disciplinary meeting, we never hear if the punishment went through. We don't know. We just, we don't know what happened. I mean, maybe I missed it, but I don't see it.
So, um, Vice President, um, could, uh, Dr. Skinner?
Yeah.
Hey, could, could you, could you step to the podium just for a second? So, only, the, the question, kinda following up to what he's kinda asking, is, um, more or less, when we see discipline, how does discipline play out?
Well, the, the question, when, when you're talking about, I, I'm not sure if you're talking about in general, or you're talking about superintendent hearings, or what?
Just overall, the overall.
I, I mean...
Because we don't never, we, we have things in play, I guess, and then say like, for instance, if I get suspended and I did something really bad or whatever, but it's never reported back. Like, we heard of the incident, but did, did it ever get carried out?
Well, what we typically do is tell you that it will be dealt with appropriately to the handbook because it's confidential information. We can't share with you, even as board members, what happens to particular students. Because that uses their name and it's got some, um, detailed information that you can't be privy to.
Plus, so the council, plus, plus if there's an appeal process, we have, we, we couldn't be an objective body in an appeal process.
Because we don't share the names when we send the emergency email. Any, we, we're not sharing names. But it is about if the parent appeals, and then now you've been provided more information and you have insight around something that could be an appeal later. And so, that's why Mrs. Wamboldt always shares that appropriate discipline will be administered. And then there, there's a level of trust that the board has for administration to administer discipline in a manner that meets and aligns with the discipline. It, it is built on trust for administrators to carry out appropriate actions in the building.
Director Watry, is that satisfied? You did it too?
Sure.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Skinner. Any further questions, anything?
I don't have a question, but I just have a comment that I really want...
Go ahead, Director Graves.
I, I'm sorry. Is that, um, um, the PIO keeps us informed as board directors of what's going on, but in terms of, of us knowing the outcome of every situation, that, that doesn't make sense. I, I work for Kansas City School District. It's a much bigger district than Hickman Mills. There's always a whole lot of stuff going on. But, you know, the, their board members don't, "What happened to Johnny? What was the outcome?" It, it just doesn't work that way. What was the outcome? It just doesn't work that way. You're informed as a Board Director, but in terms of getting involved in all that, that's, that's really not something that the Board should, that's just not, you know what I'm saying?
Point well taken.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Any other discussion on this item? All right, moving right along to 11.0 Board Committee Reports, Educational Accountability.
Uh, no updates at this time, we'll have them, uh, in March.
Thank you, Director Abrams. Uh, 11.2 Facilities, uh, we did not have a meeting, uh, but I'm kinda, uh, I went over to Irvin and, um, looked at the playground. And, um, I was hoping that some of the students was gonna be out there, uh, playing on the playground this, some of these warm days. And, uh, the playground is not, not suitable. So my question is, is basically, why is it still shut down? If my memory's corrects me, I thought they was gonna be ready to play. I thought that was something that was stated to the Board that they was gonna be able to, uh, play on the playgrounds. What is, are they waiting on right now? Two, okay, so how long are we looking?
They're thinking another couple of weeks.
So two more weeks from today? Well, just to be sure, 'cause I would like to know, uh, follow up on that, because like I said, I was under the understanding that it was ready, and it was ready to go, 'cause the pictures were sent out to the Board, and it looked all pretty. But when I went out there, like I said, it was roped off and they couldn't still play. And a lot of that, um, a lot of energy, they're not able to go outside and burn it off. So also, I looked at, um, there are also some things that are, that need to be picked up around there. There's still some things that's laying down that are sharp objects in the grass, so hopefully, we'll look at that. But other than that, that's the main thing. Yeah, I saw, but I also thought they was playing, so I do appreciate that.
Yeah, and the email Mr. Wickley sent January 9th, it said, he, he was providing an update of a few pictures of the playground at Irvin. We are one warm day away, above forty-five from completing, forty-five degrees from completing. The turf cannot be installed unless it's, uh, forty-five degrees or warmer. Uh, basketball poles went up today. We will use the other building backboards and goals for the application. So that was an update in terms of the status of the playground.
Well, I know some of the goals wasn't still up, so I just was saying, you know, they still sitting down, so those goals are not all up. But just, if we could, just make sure that we can get these up for our children. Uh, they've been inside for a long length of time, uh, and I think they deserve to be outside to play. Uh, and then there has been some warm days. I don't know what might have happened, but from what I stated. Go ahead, Mrs. Graves, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay. I was just making sure. I didn't want to interrupt you.
But we'll provide an update when everything comes in and the students are able to play on it. That's important for the Board to know.
Thank you very much, law. Thank you too, Miss Gray. 11.3 Finance Committee.
Finance Committee, uh, that, it's, uh, report was, uh, brought to the Board in, in our discussion items, so, uh, we have nothing further.
Thank you very much, Director Brooks. Director Watchery, 11.4 Policy Committees.
There, um, there have been a couple of issues that we've discussed that we will be bringing to policy, um, more pertaining towards just looking at policies regarding lockdowns and things of that nature, so. We have nothing to report as of this month, because we didn't have any items to, on our agenda to discuss, but we will have items for the following month.
All right, thank you very much. 12.0 Informational Items and Future Agenda Items. 12.1 Community Forum, 2020 Bond Issue, everybody please, uh, come out on March the 5th, 2020 at 6:00 PM at, uh, Santa Fe Millilium, on Santa Fe Road 8908, Old Santa Fe Road. 12.2 Our Family Summit, I'm asking that all Directors, please make up, uh, if you all could come to that also. March the 7th, 2020, 10 AM to 1 PM, uh, at Smith Hill 9010, Old Santa Fe Road. 12.3 Policy Committee Meeting, March 3rd, 2020, at 5:30 PM. 12.5 Finance Committees Meeting is at March the 10th, 2020, at 5:30. 12.6 Regular Session Board Meeting is March the 12th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. 12.7 Spring Break, March 16th through 20th, 2020. Uh, any other things that I missed? Any other you guys?
Move for adjournment.
All right, uh, the, there's a motion. We gotta go ahead, uh, just one moment, y'all. Now, I know we ready. Go ahead, Ms. Dunn, we gotta do a roll call for this.
Oh, wait, hold on, timeout, timeout.
No, hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Don't forget your baskets, and a warm, warm, big, big thank you for your service from ELT to the Board and building leaders and staff and, I'm sorry, and staff and students, 'cause students wrote notes to each of you, and so thank you for your service.
Thank you, uh, Dr. Cargill. Now, the Board is seeking for an adjournment motion. I can adjourn. Okay, so I'm adjourned this meeting at 8:52.